By United States Republic. Stands nation. Liberty.
So Brandon's not here yet, so Gary, you're first. Doesn't matter Taylor, does it? Yeah.
Perfect. All right, well. A little bit. Thank you for your time. My name is Josh Motzer and I appreciate Gary inviting us here to present about Brightspeed. Brightspeed is set to upgrade its existing copper network infrastructure that provides telephone and internet service in the town and throughout the county with fiber optic facilities to the home. And you may recognize some of this footprint because it was what was previously CenturyLink. So in October of last year, Brightspeed successfully acquired 20 states worth of CenturyLink's assets, Indiana being one of them, and then there's 19 other states surrounding and into the south and southeast of the United States. Our goal is with the private equity that we were given to build over 3 million addresses across those 20 states. Of the 6 and 1/2 million that we totals, about 50%, over 50% of our existing footprint in CenturyLink will get built with upgraded fiber optic facilities. So I say all that because we're not a new entrant to the market. It's actually just an upgrade to our existing facilities. We're providing telephone and internet services. As you drive through the downtown area where I met with the town this morning, our office is still there. It still says CenturyLink on the outside, but I did notice that there were Brightspeed branded trucks driving around town, which is the first I've actually gotten to see that. So part of the effort here is we want to get information out in front of you all. You kind of see an idea of where we're going to build with our own private equity. And then also we have to work with the town that we're, obviously the town of Winemac. I will have to work with NDOT as well. But then we also wanted to present to you so that you knew what we were doing and also continue to work directly with Gary and the team to make sure this goes smoothly. So lastly, before certainly want to answer your questions, you'll kind of get an idea of how many addresses or premises that we're going to pass. We're set to pass about over 1,400, so the number is 1427 that's on here. And these will all be fiber directly to the home. So it'll be upgraded speeds than of what individuals have today. So I'll pause there just to give you an opportunity and certainly ask questions.
Lightstream is also in the Winemac area, right?
Yeah, so Lightstream would be, if you traditionally look at the cable provider versus the telephone provider back in the day, that would be the divide. Lightstream would have been the cable provider and CenturyLink, what is now Brightspeed, would have been the telephone provider. And again, those are definitions by the state public utilities commissions and then the federal government. So we're the telephone side of that, yes. We'd be a competitor of theirs.
Pardon me?
We would be, we would be in direct competition with the services that they offer.
Yes, my question is why are we running two lines for the same people, same service?
Sure. What we've come to find is a couple of things. So remember what we are already, we're an incumbent carrier. Today, someone has a choice, and I was actually talking to a few customers earlier today, there are some customers that still have our service. We want to upgrade those customers and offer them a better service. But then two, we've obviously lost customers to a competing product, which would be, you mentioned, obviously of Lightstream, and maybe there's others who have chosen to go completely wireless. We're in the business of having customers, and so we want to actually try to win many of those customers back. And I think for your constituents, what you'll find is having two providers and we have to compete for their business. That's both on price as well as service quality.
Will you be burying new line?
Sure. So you'll see on here, there's a percentage of about 66%, just shy of 66% of aerial facilities. The majority of this build is actually, is aerial. So if we're in the air today, we're going to use our existing facilities to what's called overlap. So you'll be able to use our existing facilities to make the process of installation quicker and more efficient. So we'll use our existing facilities, like I said, to overlap. And then there is a small portion, remainder of that, obviously, that would be buried. So then we'd obviously work with the county and the town to seek any permits or any access that we need in those particular markets, of which obviously we have an obligation to restore any and all property disruption that we have, fill in holes, ditches, whatever it be. Certainly that's our obligation to put it back how we found it.
Some of these lines have to be buried. They'd be in the same vicinity of Lightstream, or do we know that yet?
Yeah, we would operate in the public right of way wherever possible. I mean, there are options of private easements where if a public right of way access isn't available, a vast majority of what you do is the public right of way of which we're in today, given we're providing a public utility of voice telephone service. So it would be in the same public right of way.
Some of the challenges we've had with other companies burying lines just this spring are coming back to fixed tile and coming back to fixed lines. What can you do as far as a bond or that sort of thing to ensure that that is taken care of and something that shows up a year or two down the road could be taken care of?
Yeah, absolutely. So in our, in the continued conversations with Gary, our teams have offered, both in this market as well as other markets, surety bonds or other collateral that is necessary. So it's common practice for us in our industry to offer that. I don't have the specific details of what exactly that looks like, but I've been on dozens of these calls where we're able to offer exactly what you're referring to. So it'd be something we can work with Gary on.
Okay. Well, a lot of it would be directly with landowner. Well, property owners as far as private tile, private pipes, that sort too. But I don't know how far out in the country, so I'm not sure.
And my apologies, I should have clarified. I just gave you this and I didn't explain. So the pink, the pink drawing, it looks like a kind of a misshaped polygon in there. Our build-
Looks like a puzzle piece.
It does look like a puzzle piece, yeah. So that particular puzzle piece, that's, we're building inside that pink polygon. Outside of that, we still serve. So if you go anywhere north, southeast and west of here, it is likely that we have our existing network that sits outside that footprint. They're not receiving this initial investment, but the goal there is, is to continue to evaluate where, whether they be state grants, local grants, federal grants, because there's a lot of money in our broadband space right now, we might pursue those or try to pursue those. All inside the pink, it's all done in our own private capital.
Okay.
You're talking about within the right of way? Understood. And obviously, our obligation by state law is to calling locates for all of those facilities. And again, one of the nice things is, is that our initial build is almost 65%, almost 66%, sorry, aerial, where we wouldn't be addressing any of that underground.
Okay.
It is, but anywhere there's a county road, obviously we wanted to come in and make sure that we got ahead of any build, but we wouldn't want to end up having to stop while we were building within the town.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so we wanted to make sure we got out ahead of it. And also the same thing within, making sure that we have communication with them as well. And as I said earlier today, we met with Brad at the town of Winemac and we're able to obviously give him these same details and they're talking about it at their meeting next week.
What depth would you be burying line at?
Every community obviously has its own requirements. I'd certainly just look with whatever requirement that Plask County has. And again, my initial conversation here is certainly not one and done. This is intended to be introductory, continue the conversation so that all the works is done here to meet all the standards and permitting requirements and attachment requirements, whatever, whether it be the county or the town incorporated areas. We certainly want to just make this easy for everybody. And also we have contact information that we've provided both to the city and the town and the bottom, and it gives us an opportunity. And I'm sorry, I should have left, mine's not on here. I'll leave my card with you all. Just want to be open with it and know that we're excited about being able to, you know, come back and upgrade for our customers.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you for the information and keep us posted.
You will, thank you.
Hey Gary.
Bridge update?
Yeah. Jeff first. Give us a little bit of a bridge update.
Evening.
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 Well, wanted to talk briefly about Bridge 249. That is a bridge that is at the, basically the top of your list on your asset management plan as far as replacements go. It's over Mill Creek on County Road 250 South. And it's, and so what the plan is here is to design a replacement for that bridge and then the county will then apply for, for community crossing grant funds to cover 75% of the construction cost for that. The engineers' plans right now would call for that construction to take place next year, 2024. And we would, if approved, we would time that so that we don't interfere with the planting season or the harvest season, try to do that in between there. Keep the roads-
The truth like these instances?
Yes.
At first I thought it was the one from the gravel road and I went down and I went up laughing. And the other, negative side of it, I had to have a try.
Well, that's what myself, Jeff and the whole United team, we look at as a whole with Dave, which roads get the most traffic that would cause a big problem if we had an issue. And so that's why this is on the top of the list. And I just wanted to have Jeff come and give you guys an update to say if we want to proceed on with this and we'll apply in January. We're going to have the call for the community crossings so that we can, you know, 75%, we'll pay 25% of the construction.
So you wait until 2024?
January.
Still about?
And I think in January, then easily find out sometime middle of March, maybe first April.
I'm done. We'd be able to, the goal would be to begin design work. If the commissioners approve the agreement, we would be able to get the survey crew out here in the next week or so. The tricky part on projects like these for any county right now is the permitting process. It's unpredictable and it can be long. And so what NDOT likes to see is getting out in front of it as far as you can so that you can get the permits obtained in time, any necessary right of way obtained. There's maybe, maybe three parcels that may be affected, but most of it, most of it's just like small side ditch right next to the bridge, it's not farm, farm ground itself. So there's usually not an issue to obtain that, but we want to get in front of that, get it all in place and be shovel ready when you, you submit your application. And then that's another thing that NDOT likes to see is a shovel ready project. And back on wood, we've not had a single bridge turned down for community crossing applications. The high likelihood that you'd be able to get that built next summer.
If the grant was not approved, this pre-grant work that you do, who pays for that, Gary? Okay. Well, I know you never say never, but what if?
There's always that chance that United Consulting has done, oh my gosh, dozens of bridges for community crossing grants, we've never had a single one turned down. NDOT, and I've not known any of our competitors have bridges turned down either for clients that I call. Bridges are a high priority for NDOT right now. Paving will get, they'll get the money for paving, whatever's left over for bridges. That's how that tends to work.
Okay, glad to have you on our side then, if you're 100%. So does someone want to make a motion for them to go ahead and pursue this bridge repair?
Yeah, so moved.
Been moved and seconded, any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only other thing I have is, I don't know if you know, but the pavement project is underway and within probably maybe a week, it should be completed.
On 200 South?
200 South and 200 West to stay with 39. What?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That is nice to get compliments before it's finished.
So is anyone here for Assured Partners? Yeah, I had to talk with him on the phone and I think, I'm going to have the insurance committee meet with Eric sometime next week. That puts us down to Edwin.
Hi. Well, CIRPSY's board last week approved CIRPSY applying to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a Safe Roads and Streets for All Grant, which would allow us to do road safety plans for each of our counties that want to participate. So we're going around asking each county if they want to participate. A road safety plan will look at the county's transportation network. They'll talk to your law enforcement, your schools, your highway department, elected officials to find out what type of safety issues you're having. They'll look at all your crash data to determine where your crashes are occurring, what types of crashes are occurring. And then they'll come up with proposed solutions that can address some of those issues. And those can be a wide range of possible solutions. It could be education programs, it could be signage, it could be different types of pavement, all sorts. It could be complete road reconstruction if necessary, if there's a really bad spot. But they'll come up with these solutions to your, where your safety issues are. And we pulled, we have to pull the data for that application. And for the last five years available, Plask County's had 22 fatal crashes, fatalities. So roughly about four, over four a year. So once you have this plan, that makes you eligible to apply for implementation grants. So you'd be able to apply to implement some of the solutions that are in the plan. And you'll also, the state also has a program for safety improvements that you'd be able to apply for. It is an 80% grant, so we're asking the counties that wish to participate to provide 20% match. Now, we've talked to, actually Stark and White Counties were already talking to consultants and we're going to do this safety plan on their own. So they had gotten some proposals from consultants to do that. One of the consultants was considerably lower than the other one, but we took the high just so to make sure we have enough money to pay for it. We'll have to go through a procurement process to select the consultant, but the amount for your match would be a maximum of $18,250, but we expect it to be considerably lower than that based on the proposals we've seen. The timing on this is the application's due July 10th. They said they'll make awards the fourth quarter of '23, but then it says in there that it could take up to 12 months to get grant agreements signed from the federal government, so we know how that goes. So it could be '25 before we actually get started, or it could be sometime in '24. It just depends on how fast paperwork gets processed. They had this grant last year and everybody that applied was funded and they had 200 million left over. So I've been told it's pretty much a sure thing if you apply. We're asking our eight counties if they want to participate. So far, six have said they want to participate. We're here tonight and I have somebody in Stark County asking, asking them if they want to participate.
So is the funding for the actual implementation, is that fairly lucrative too, or is no?
I think it was much more competitive than the planning funds. From what I've been told, the larger projects got funded last year, it was the first year they'd had this grant, so it funded pretty large projects. But I think going on, some of the smaller projects will get funded. I said also the state has a program that you can apply to for safety improvement. That'd probably be less competitive than this one in the future. Or some of them may be eligible for community crossings or that type of, depending on what the project is, there could be other funding sources once you establish what needs to be done.
So if participate, here's a list of things that need to be done. Is there a time commitment?
No, there's no commitment. It's not a mandate. You don't have to complete what's in the plan, it's just giving you a plan to, so that you want to try to get some of things that will help safety. You'd have a plan on what those things might be.
Do you have an idea of where the other counties are coming up with the money to?
Um, I know, a couple of them said it was the highway department. I know Carroll County this morning said it was the edit funds they were going to use.
Case is optional to the county.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, any other questions for Edwin? Yes. Spending the highest figure, 18,750, this safety study. Nothing in there says deer-related accidents, is there?
No, not specifically, but if that's, I mean, if that's one of your, I'm not sure what the solutions they'll find for that are. There are lots of people would like to know. I've had a couple deer in Plask County over the years.
Comments, questions? Edwin needs a commitment from county, say we participate with you. Six counties that have accepted this challenge.
Question?
Well, we, we had a copy from Big County of their road set, their plan, and it's very in-depth, very in-depth, of all the details, but yes, to take it on head, deer signs are expensive to put up, deer crossing signs throughout our county. I mean, that's a lot of our accidents, I think. I mean, we'd have to get the accident study.
Yeah, I agree with County Route a lot. And one thing our County Route sees is heat, is center lines on the hills. Now, that being, and that being involved in, there on 500 or 550, the Plask County branch was blocked up, that's how a motorcycle person got killed, because somebody was passing on the hill and then sued them, there by cootens.
Yeah, the, the plan may identify areas that need better striping so that you would know where those areas are.
I know White County's got striping on their main blacktop road, some do, other counties do too. We've never had any striped lines in Plask County.
Yeah, I know.
$1,100 a mile.
How much?
$1,100 a mile just for two white lines.
Really? How long does it take, Mike?
I'm checking on the 200 South project.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, this part of it, even makes it better.
Yeah, this, this plan might identify those areas where you need to focus that, so you don't have to paint lines on all those roads, just on those areas that they've seen the most crashes, accidents.
Oh, with safety being a priority. Edwin.
Moved and seconded, question, Edwin or?
I think there are a couple of letters. I'd sent Vicky a couple of letters to sign. I can make sure you get them.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye. If, if not, I can get them. Thanks, Edwin.
Have they ever said, who?
Vicky.
Oh.
I don't need them.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, now we're down to the claims and payroll, number 11.
Okay, I've reviewed the claims and payroll 11 and I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Moving seconded, any other discussion, claims and payroll? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Regular station minutes, 15th sent to us.
I would review them and I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have the CDL Company Incorporated. Last meeting, we approved the new purchase of printers and copiers. That was for the surveyor's office and the extension office. Have a contract here to sign. The approval of the contract with CDL.
Hey, I would make a motion to approve the contract, CDL.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then another item of business that is an agreement, this goes along with Epic. This, this is a business associate agreement entered into and between the ONI Risk Partners and Epic. We need to sign off on this agreement as well. Alex has already signed it, but this company basically does a footwork to keep our health documentation secure.
documentation secure, safe. I assume that Epic has used this company before, but I do need to sign off on it if the commissioners approve it. So we would need to approve the business associate agreement with ONI.
Okay, I would make a motion to go forward with that.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a letter here from Dr. Menary for the Public, Plaski County Public Library, wanting to reappoint Ms. Wilder, Ms. Wilder, to serve on their library board for another four-year term.
Okay, now, we just reappointed her a year ago. That, that was to finish a term. Now it's important. Oh, a different one, okay. All right, okay, well, I would make a motion to approve that appointment.
Aye. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a guest with us tonight that is not on the agenda, Autumn Kniebel. Want to come up and introduce yourself, your new position? We can get you approved. So if you were given the okay, when would you go to work?
I actually, office.
Hey.
I'd say we better get you approved.
I would say so.
No.
That is very true.
We don't operate that way. Yeah, there we go.
So we have a motion to approve Autumn Kniebel to the water and water support, district support.
Yes, I would.
Position.
I would make that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. You have a discussion or questions for Autumn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry we made you wait till the end of the meeting, but any other discussion from the commissioners?
Yes. So this is, we had discussed this a year ago, to little to no avail. This is about county road setbacks. And our county roads are in really good shape and we have an outstanding team doing a phenomenal job of maintaining those roads, take a lot of pride in them. And our vision is to keep our roads well-maintained and safe. And it's come to our attention that there are some farmers have been planting increasingly close to the roadways and into the right of way. Now, most farmers in the county are very careful to honor that right of way and not to block the signs with their crops, angling off at the corner of the intersection. However, some have been aggressive with their planting and we feel this is making a dangerous situation. And there's some my way that even plants into the gravel road. And I have consulted with our attorney and we are confident that we have the right to keep our right of way clear of crops and to prevent signs from being blocked. And so we are asking the county highway to mow and maintain up to approximately five feet easement along the road sides to ensure that the roads and intersections are visible. In addition, we are asking the highway to, we are asking for cooperation from farmers of keeping the intersection safe and to make sure that they do not plant. I know planting is done this year, but we'll put this out there again next year. To angle off so that the signs are visible and with their inroads. And if motorists notice an intersection with inhibited visibility, they can call the county highway and they'll come down and mow that out down so that we can see that. And so that's all I have as far as the county road setbacks.
I think I just wanted to also make sure that Gary knows that you have the commissioner's report, doing what needs to be done and keeping roadside safe. I think there's even tillage tool marks in some of the asphalt in a couple places. You could say, well, the guy went to sleep and got in the road, but that's probably not the case because it was the same spot last year. So they plant, reset, plant in the gravel.
And I've, I've taken some pictures with ears of corn from a year ago, right next to the road. So this is an ongoing situation and when the edge of the road is disc, it compromises the integrity of the road when that shoulder is dissed away. So that's why we're asking to honor that five-foot shoulder, edge of the road, right of way and so that we can maintain roads for larger equipment and heavier loads. So I think this should benefit everybody.
Okay, any other, any community comments? Motion to adjourn? I guess my thought on that, since they were sealed bids, need to go with bid that was presented accurately. I don't like the idea for somebody to show up at a meeting and say, well, I can do this. I don't know what, what your feelings are, but sealed bid is a sealed bid and, and it should not allow, we probably should have said that, I probably should have said that that night, but I don't think we, you're not honoring a sealed bid if you allow changes after they've been presented, even if the other one was more, a little bit more, still the other one wasn't presented properly with right equipment and so on. No, we're operating still on the old, old bids and I've not seen any, you know, ask the one gentleman to put his changes in writing after thinking about it. That's probably not correct procedure for sealed bid, you go with a sealed bid. Well, not necessarily take the one bid that was offered that was compliant. Yes. Approve the bid that was presented accurately. I don't have those in front of me, I don't even remember what company we're fetching. We could approve the bid that was presented accurately, let Brandon get to ordering, or we could table it till other two weeks are gone.
Yeah. Okay.
And we need a motion to table the ambulance.
Okay, I would, you made, you made a motion to table it. I would second that motion to table the ambulance.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the ambulance, aye.
Aye on the ambulance to table it.
And hearing no other business, meetings adjourned.
Meetings adjourned, yeah.
Get Gary's thing signed first.